Yeah, we're good ones.
It's probably not my first day.
Okay.
Okay, for Ed Schop, who's not here? Trammell?
Here.
For Shears?
Here.
Shropshire.
Here.
I know of no petitions from the audience, so discuss possibly prove the minutes of October fourteen, twenty twenty-five meeting, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion made and seconded any discussion. Hearing no discussion, call for the vote.
Trammell?
Yes.
For Shears?
Yes.
Shropshire.
Yes. Okay, mayor's report, Mr. Mayor.
I'll be quick. All right, y'all got these numbers just as soon as I did, about fifteen minutes ago. But a quick little analysis on them. We've got nine hundred and, oh, that's written, nine hundred ninety-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine. So we're, that's a sixty-three thousand increase over the average. Uh, no, I'm sorry, over last month.
Last month, yeah.
The last month, I put something else in my notes, I apologize. And about twenty thousand, five twelve over our average, so that's a good month, we'll take it. Anything close to a million is a great number for us. Uh, used tax, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred. Again, we're forty thousand over last month and about ten thousand uh, over our average, so we'll take it, that's a positive month for us. You also saw the September financials that came out, where the, the general fund revenues over expenses was about two hundred and fifty thousand. So I think, you know, we talked about that briefly in, in council meeting, and I think that that's a good place for us to be right now.
Yeah.
I think we're, you know, we're, we're still trending in the right direction. We still need to be cautious and prudent with what we do. I think a lot of credit goes to our departments for, for doing the best they can to, to work under the conditions, they're doing a good job. So any questions on any of that?
No, sir.
Well, I, just real quick.
Yeah.
I meant to ask you earlier today, but with the standard increases to our budget, how do you see? I mean, are you confident about the, uh, our revenues matching our normal expense increases? Like insurance and things like that? Are we?
I think we're.
Staying flat, or do you think?
Yeah, no, I think we're fine, I think we're, I think we're good. I think the thing that we have to remember, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to preach it the way that it should come out. In the past, this time of year, we were typically looking seven, eight hundred thousand in the hole.
Yeah.
In the past, it was habitually said, that's because we paid everything all at once. And at the end of the year, it's still the same amount that we're gonna be paying out this year, but what we've done is by setting those up quarterly, or setting them up incrementally, it doesn't put all of that blow at the beginning of the year. Now, whether or not that's gonna make us change our path, I don't know. But, but the optics of that are that we're not starting off the year that far in the hole.
Well, we're gonna have a clear picture of where we're at, basically.
Yes, yes.
We're not waiting for, we're not waiting, we're not waiting for our revenues to catch up.
Correct.
Correct, so in the end, we're spending the same amount. Our revenues are up, clearly, you can look at our, our, your tax sheet there. If you look at the, the bottom of the sales tax for Prior Creek section, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty year, our average was seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a month. Then that goes up in twenty-one, twenty-two to eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand, to twenty-three, twenty-four, we're at nine twelve. Last year, our average was nine hundred and thirty-eight, and now we're, we're rolling at nine hundred and seventy-five thousand. Granted, we're only, we're just under halfway through, but that's a tremendous increase of two hundred thousand solid. That we're getting a, per month more in our, in our gross sales tax, and the same trend, you know, we're up, well, let's see.
Well, if you look at, I mean, if you take out the month of September this year, which I, I think was just an anomaly, we're up every month over last month.
Well, I think what happened with the month of September is I think that a lot of the vendors showed up early for Rocklahoma, and they were buying things online. They're putting in their Amazon orders, and they were doing that, and having it shipped too, and I think that's where some of that might, that's.
Would that have been sales tax or used tax?
That would be sales tax if it was done.
If they'd ordered it before they got here, we wouldn't have gotten it, it would have been wherever they lived.
It's just how they've ordered it, so, you know, that's, that's the only thing I can contribute to is, either way, it doesn't matter, it's a good month, and we'll take it. The idea is, if you look at our, our, our average, go to the second page there, our average total combined, ten million, five hundred, ten million, seven hundred, eleven million, five hundred, eleven million, five hundred again, twelve, two, twelve, seven. And here we are, we've got, we don't even have a full recording of what these first five months are, and we're just about half of where we were for the year. So we're on track again for twelves, hot, low thirteens. We're trending in the right direction. As long as we keep our spending curbed, and we keep our spending realistic, and we're reasonable, it gives us an opportunity to look at some of those things that, one, are there things that we need to reintroduce into our, into our budget? Things that we had to cut out in desperation? Two, what do we need to do to maintain the building up of revenues? And that's really what I'd like to focus on is, how do we build up our reserves? How do we get ourselves back to have that, that security underneath us? So that one bad month happened and we're, I mean, what if this shutdown would have gone a long, a lot further? We could really see a, a tick in sales go down. So we need to make sure that we're not in a situation where something like, you know, sixty days of a government shutdown, and we're going, oh, crud. So I think we, we focus on building up our reserves and getting ourselves safely back to where we need to be.
This doesn't have anything to do with prior money, but did you hear in the news this morning where Tulsa's talking about putting a penny sales tax? Trying to book that in? I mean, a, a city the size of Tulsa is, is beginning to have problems. They've already done that at Collinsville, they've already done that at Calicoal. And it's, it's, since we run totally on sales tax, it's, it's getting to where a lot of the cities are.
There is, there's a lot of discussion going back and forth among the, the mayors, excuse me, the mayors, OML, and legislation on other means of ways to fund cities. You know, we, I sent to a couple of the council members for some thought and review, um, and ordinance that would propose a used, or a, not a use. Help me out, Charles, what is that, occupational tax? On, um, not the cells, not the cell to the end user, but to the growers distributors and things like that of marijuana. It would be a, an annual occupational tax. Is that something that we think would be logical? A few years ago, we looked at alcohol tax, is that something? You know, those are those revenues where we can look at them and go, is that beneficial, is that something that would help us with a little bit more income every month? I mean, my gosh, imagine if we had four thousand dollars more, and we'd have had over a four million doll, or over a million dollar month. So those little increases make big impacts. And that's what we've got to focus on and find those ways. We've got a, you know, small business Sun Saturday coming up, uh, in two weeks. How are we gonna help promote shop downtown on that day, it's dedicated for that? How are we gonna give the, the business owners, who I'm gonna be honest, right now are kind of feeling a little bit like they're seeing some COVID stuff going on again? Where the sales are dropping, sales are low, and they're a little bit of panic. We need to make sure that we buoy them up and say, hey, we'll promote it, we'll put it out there on our, on our social media, we'll tell our friends and family, come shop Prior, come be in Prior. That's what's gonna get that cash flow going again. And that's what we need to do is, as, as a community, as leadership, as, as citizens, we need to put it out there, shop local. And then support our businesses and say, hey, I know we wanna go home, but. I think Bruce keyed the phrase the other day, and I did send him a picture of Saturday morning when he said, well, heck, on a Saturday morning, you can do a square dance downtown. I went through this Saturday at nine AM and it was empty.
Ghost town.
So how do we get that going, how do we do that? And a lot of what you're seeing with that collabora, collaboration between Main Street, the Chamber, EDTA, the city, how do we get that moving, how do we get that, that hustle and bustle started back up? And I think we just have to get through, um, supporting our businesses, letting them know that we got their back.
All right, well, the other reason I mentioned that too is because there's been questions before about the library going back to the OML. Perhaps involve hiring people, whether ten or nine, and then of course, there's the optics of how much police we have and, you know, staff. And that's always gonna be a question that's gonna come up at some point, but, at what point are we gonna feel like we can responsibly begin slowly opening those things up, whether it's gonna be this year, next year?
I think the position I've taken, on all, if I could personally, position I've taken is I am very comfortable now hiring at the staffing levels we've got now. But we have to continue to be really cautious on hiring additional than what we got now, because we could still have a crash, we don't know.
If inflation would go down, then we would be able to do that, but the price of everything is, is killing us.
And that's kind of the approach I take whenever I see like a hiring action where, and I'm just gonna use Jeremy, you know, when his officers leave, he backfills it.
Right.
I'm, I'm, we're at that level in the budget where I'm comfortable saying, sure, let's do that.
Well, and I think it's responsible of us to look at where we really truly were. As comfortable as it may have seemed, we had a lot of overage in, in payroll. Now, nobody wants to get rid of employees, nobody wants to lessen the numbers, nobody wants to work on smaller crews. But we had to hone that in, and I think that's helping us. Now, I'm with you, I think there may be a time where we look at, Carrie, are you ready? And Carrie and I have had that discussion, when she's ready, she'll come to you, and we'll have that discussion. But we may have to say, oh, you can open it more, but we don't have the payroll yet, we're not, we're not out of the water. We're just trending.
We're trending water.
Right, so that said, um, you know, our, our clerk, they've got to have a court clerk. Jay physically cannot take on any more responsibility. So that's something we have to do, we have to get that position filled.
That's a replacement.
It is a replacement, and I think that's where, where we just, we make sure that when we're hiring, we're hiring the right people, the right fit for, for our needs, and we look at the right people. We'll just leave it at that, that's fair, right? So, you know, we don't get in a hurry, and I don't think we wanna be in a situation where we're just hiring to hire. And that, that means due diligence from the department, that's, and they're doing a great job. You know, you look at the, the officers that chief is bringing in, they're young, they're moldable, they're, they're healthy, they're excited, they're energetic. Um, and that's, that says a lot, that, that'll help him build a good base to, to a good future, so. Yeah, anyways.
It'll come around.
It'll come around. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna stand right up here because of the next one.
All right, discuss the possible rip being counsel action to authorize the mayor to seek quotes for the replacement of the city hall roof, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded discussion.
Can we do bids instead of quotes?
So first thing I need to do is I need to find out what the ballpark is gonna be. I don't know what replacing a roof on this is, so I need to be able to go to somebody, um, or a couple somebodies and say, what are we looking at if we put a roof, what kind of roof do we wanna put on it? I am not a subject matter expert, and I don't think anybody in this room is, are you?
I am not.
She probably is.
Are you a roofer? No, okay, so that said, we need to consult, and that's really where I wanna start, I wanna start with some consultations. What I think would be the best at this point, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna inquire on, uh, is a metal roof instead of this shingle nonsense.
Yep.
We have very clearly.
We need to give it a name.
Alf, right, something like that. But it's a very distinct line, and that line goes into the hallway, and it goes into the records room, to the outside of the building where we see rust coming out from underneath the eaves. And the fascia there, we need to make sure that, that we're, we're not doing something that is gonna mimic the problems we have with the exact same roof at the police station. So for right now, yes, some of that's been sealed up, and that, the leaks there have almost come to a stop. But if you remember, the problems we had weren't just rain, it was when there was snow and a driving pressure. So we'll see as we get into winter, but for the, for city hall, I think it would behoove us to just, we're, we're at about twenty years for this building, is that about right? Fifteen?
No, closer to fifteen.
Fifteen, I think that's about getting to the average life expectancy of a roof, a shingle roof, so I think we.
Roofs last about thirty years on a residential home.
Depends on what you put up there.
If Graber does it, it's gonna leak, so that's it.
I guess where I, where my comment, Zach, where I was going was, I would like to avoid this death spiral that we've been in with just going back, every, you know, constantly kicking the can down the road, quote versus bid versus, let's do this one right.
I, I.
If you wanna go out and figure out what is the cost to do this, to, then, to figure out if it's a quote or a bid, I'm good with that. But, you know, let's.
What we need to do.
So here's, here's my game plan, I need to find out what it is. I wanna make sure that budget and council fully understands that my intent, much like the golf carts, we didn't know what ballpark we were even in. And we're just going, well, let's go out for bids, well, how do I know if those bids are even gonna be reasonable, if I don't even know what I'm looking for? So I need to bring in a couple of consults, and I need to say, what are we, we don't even know the square footage of our roof, we don't even know if that steeple up above can be removed and replaced. I, the, you know, I'm talking about the wind vane? We need to make sure that we have all of that in place, and so what kind of a ballpark are we looking at? I put us.
So when you say in quotes, you're just trying to figure out how much this is gonna cost, you're not actually.
I'm not doing it yet.
You're not trying to get.
He wants a ballpark.
Official quote, okay, all right.
Right, I need to, I need to get an idea, much like when I did the Graham Building air conditioning, I had to go to somebody and say, what's this gonna cost?
Do they charge us to give us just quotes?
Most of them will not. Most of them will not. You know, we've, we've hit up O-MAG several times for insurance claims, and they've always been denied, or they wanna know exactly which rainstorm caused the leak. Well, I don't think anybody knows which one caused the leak, and that said, they've rejected every claim we've put through. And I have sent them hundreds of pictures.
And they're the only game in town.
O-MAG, right, so the idea is, I think it's just time to replace it, and we've put the capital aside specifically for that. Planning on about a hundred thousand, maybe a little bit more, is my guesstimate. We've got plenty throughout the capital that we can use for that, but I think it is imperative that we keep this building in good working condition.
Completely agree, I mean, I'm not questioning the need for a new roof, I'm just, I'm just wanting to make sure we do it right, I don't wanna get in.
Yeah, we're not going out for final, final end bids right now.
Right, I'm good.
This is consultations probably is what we need to start with.
Okay.
So you guys are okay with that, I'll go out and get that ball rolling.
Well, I think we need to take a vote to see about that right now.
I'm good with that.
For Shears?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
All right.
And likely what I'll do, um, because we've gotten pricing already on, on some other things, is I will turn that bidding process over to infrastructure. Let him bid that out. That way, he can get it posted.
Infrastructure solutions.
Dale, yeah.
Yeah, Dale, okay.
Let him just say, hey, we need a roof, get it bid out and get us a new roof.
And anybody know who to call to get these quotes?
All right.
All right. Number six, discuss possibly recommend council action regarding the, an expenditure not to exceed ten thousand dollars to backward audio for improvements to the council chamber audio system, entertain a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, uh, discussion.
Okay, I got my bid back from, my bid, my quote, my consult, whatever you wanna call it, from backward audio. It's about nine thousand, eight hundred bucks for the, basically what we would be have, what we would have installed, is we're gonna put some gooseneck microphones here that will come up. And to you, I said, I don't want anything on this. Uh, and then the real expense comes, um, in a new mixer. So basically, the, what he's found the problem is, is that it's not a failure to the mics, it's not a failure to the switch, even though we are gonna change that switch out to a on-off, it'll, it won't be this goofy dial thing that nobody knows what number really kicks it on. The problem is, is that the antiquated mixer we have can't decipher at the right rate who's speaking. And so it defaults to off.
Okay.
So it's, it's trying to pick up, and so basically what he has is he's got a mixer that has, I think it was ten channels or twelve channels, something like that. It's very specific, and it automatically mixes, and it doesn't matter if Bruce is talking, or, or Lori's talking. Whoever's voice is the predominant voice, it will balance and fade appropriately. But it will mix well with what we're trying to do with YouTube and things like that. The video is not the problem, video is fine, we got four K cameras, but he'll also get that camera where it's working properly. And then hopefully eventually we get a, a unit here that would allow them full control of it at this desk. Without that thing that used to be up there, we're talking like a tablet. But either way, that would just be a remote start and stop for you. So we're nine thousand, eight hundred, so here's where we're at, I reached out to, um, if you remember, when we did the first go-round of upgrades, we got a sponsorship from Google, they have agreed to entertain that sponsorship again. I sent her the other day, uh, the, the invoice, and she sent me an ethics sheet that I filled out. And then, right before I got up here, she said, thank you for signing that, have your attorney sign it as well, that covers all the bases. They'll go in and they'll put in the request for that nine thousand, eight hundred, and then they will pay for that au, audio upgrade via reimbursement.
Wow.
So we'll do the initial, and then that way, that whole upgrade will be funded through a sponsorship with Google.
So it'll be free, for, for the city?
For the city. For the city council chamber specifically.
Okay, perfect.
But that will cover the, the cost on that, so. When I said, what's the likelihood, she said, I've never been told no.
That's good.
So that would be a, a great blessing, so as soon as, as soon as I get Chase to sign that ethics thing in the morning and get that back to her, within a week, we should know and get it done. If you guys are okay with that, we've also got that put away in capital if we need to. But her instructions were, don't spend anything until I get an approval, otherwise I may not be able to approve it. So let's just.
Hold off.
Hold off, okay? But that is coming, that'll, either way, we're gonna get this fixed.
All right, further discussion. I'll hear another further discussion, so I'll put a vote.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
For Shears?
Yes.
All right, number seven, discuss possibly recommend council action regarding a hotel motel grant final expense report from Hot Rods on a mission for a car show held September the thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of four thousand dollars, uh, motion?
Motion.
Sir.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Have any discussion on that? All right, hearing no discussion, let's call for the vote.
Trammell?
Yes.
For Shears?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes, number eight, discuss possibly recommend council action regarding a hotel motel grant final expense report from Mays County Hope for the Damn Jam Bicycle Tour held September the sixth, uh, two thousand, twenty-five, in the amount of ten thousand dollars, entertain a motion.
Motion.
Sir. Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing no discussion, call for the vote.
For Shears?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Discuss a possibly recommend council action regarding a hotel motel grant application from the Prior Area Chamber of Commerce for the Blue Gas and Barbecue Festival held October the seventeenth and eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of five thousand dollars, entertain a motion.
Motion.
Sir.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing no discussion, call for the vote.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
For Shears?
Yes.
Okay, number ten, discuss and recommend council action regarding hotel motel grant application from Prior Area Chamber of Commerce for the Oki Homestead Expo to be held March the twentieth and the twenty-first, twenty twenty-six, in the amount of three thousand and five hundred dollars. Entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing no discussion, call for the vote.
Trammell?
Yes.
For Shears?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes. Discuss possibly recommend council action regarding a hotel motel grant application from Santa's Christmas. Discuss possibly recommend council action regarding a hotel motel grant application from Santa's Christmas Village to be held December the sixth, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars, entertain a motion.
Motion.
So.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. I had something, it's two hundred and fifty dollars enough for that? Are we sure?
That'll cover what he would have to pay for that Graham building.
Okay, is that all he was after?
That's it.
Okay, well, that, that'll cover it, we'll then, uh, call for the vote.
For Shears?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Okay. Discuss possibly recommend council action regarding the twenty twenty-six Budget Committee meeting schedule. Entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second, I didn't even look at that.
It's the same, it's the.
Basically the same.
Third, uh, Tuesday, so, I mean, second Tuesday, the Tuesday between the two councils, I mean, depending on the month, I'll put it that way.
Okay.
And now, we did have one tomorrow that was a problem because of a legal federal holiday.
So, uh. That was taken into consideration when we did this schedule last year, because we knew it was gonna fall that way, so it was, this is a regular meeting because we knew ahead of time, and that's why we did.
It's always been scheduled for tonight, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, it was approved by council to have it tonight.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
No.
All right, uh, call for the vote.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Trammell?
No, yes.
For Shears?
Yes.
I know, I know, unforeseen business, so I'll, I'll, uh, take a, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, no discussion? All right, call for the vote.
Trammell?
Yes.
For Shears?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes, all right, we are adjourned.